Well, it's seven o'clock. We want to start our meeting. I'd like to welcome everyone here. Uh, just as a, before we start, um, just to fill you in on Mayor Fippen. Uh, Mayor Fippen had some severe headaches last week. Um, his wife ended up taking him to the emergency room Sunday night. They found out that he had a brain bleed. So they, um, they took care of that. They drained his skull. Um, because he has a couple of holes in his head and I, I visited him yesterday at the hospital and I, I said to him and I told him I wouldn't do this, but I said, I've always heard you had holes in your head, but he literally does. And so I, I mean that with all respect and so sorry for saying that publicly. Uh, we haven't started the minutes yet, but, um, but he is home today and doing much better. Uh, the, the employees know that he was struggling last week with not feeling good and, um, at one point he says, I remember hitting my head. I just can't remember what I did it on. And it's been there for a, a week or two. So, but he is good. He is, uh, we've been texting and like I said, I got to visit him last night and so just, uh, we wish him well and, uh, we appreciate the support from the city staff of what they've done to, to, to fill in and do those things. And so, thank you for, for that. We'll start our meeting tonight, uh, with a pledge and Katie will lead us in that and then Janelle will give us a opening prayer.
Please rise and repeat after me. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly father, we're thankful for the opportunity to be gathered together as a city council and, and residents and planning commission. We're thankful for the opportunity to serve and for the wonderful community that we live in. Please help us to be wise and to make the best decisions for the city and, and that we can have a, have a spirit of cooperation and friendship. We're thankful for the many blessings that we've been given and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Janelle. Um, let's start with public comments. Is there any public comments that anyone would like to make tonight? Okay, Mike, come to the podium. You know the, you know the drill, Mike. State your name and.
Is that still the same? Hi, my name's Mike Beal. I live at fourteen oh seven North Two Thousand West in Far West. Been living there for over twenty years and I've been attending these meetings for a good twenty years. And I, I'm gonna step out on a limb here and say something I probably shouldn't, but I'm gonna say it anyway because I've watched an awful lot of people fill these chairs and fill the planning commission chairs over the past twenty years. Cause I don't think I've missed more than twenty days of meetings, both sides. I, uh, I hope that when it comes time to reinstate Mr. Ted Black, that it will be put down. I don't know if he's gonna stay or come and go, or if he's put in resignation or anything. I'm just stating of what I feel because I do believe that he can be a bully at times. Having been on the planning commission when he took over the chair position. And, uh, I don't think that that is a full-time job on a planning commission. I think there's a lot of other people out here in the city that could and probably would put their name in for any openings that come up. I thank you all for your service up there and I thank Mr. Black for his service. But that's just my humble opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Are there any other public comments? Okay, let's move on to the report from the planning commission. Chairman Black.
Mr. Mayor Protem, is that the correct term? Something like that?
Call me what you want.
Your Eminence Boyd Farron. This is a report on the planning commission meeting, January twenty-sixth. Uh, we did have a public hearing to consider the rezone of the John Watson property at eleven hundred North Two Thousand West from R one fifteen to a C two zone. The planning commission, after the public hearing, did vote to recommend to the city council that that rezone be allowed. We also considered the Matt Montero, Montano, excuse me, site plan and also voted to, uh, recommend approval of that site plan to the city council. Uh, it was, uh, voted by the city council to recommend my reappointment to the planning commission. Uh, Mr. Steve Hurd, who has served on the planning commission, I think, uh, over three years now. Uh, Steve had, uh, has done a great job, but his, uh, work life and family life have just uh, become too hectic and we hope Steve returns to public service at some point when it better fits his life. Uh, we also voted, uh, to recommend to the city council to appoint Geneva Blanchard as the president, or excuse me, as the chair. Pardon me. I gave her a little promotion there. Uh, as chair of the planning commission and to appoint Lyle Earl as the vice chair of the planning commission. And that is my report.
Okay, thank you. Is any questions for planning commission?
Um, uh, specific to the Mike Montano, uh, site plan. Was there any discussion about just comparing the site plan to what was in the conditional use that was approved and?
So there, there was some conditions. I, I did an email today and I apologize. It would take me more time to find it than you have, but I believe every, all of our concerns had been addressed before the seat.
Thank you.
Would that be sent? I could, I guess, I'm not on the planning commission emails, but I'd be interested to see, cause I know there was discussion about like the landscaping thing. So was that all addressed?
It came today.
It did.
Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry. Oh, you're right. I did see it come through. I didn't read it. That's my fault. Sorry Ted. I'll look at my email.
Thanks for your service, Ted.
Yep.
Appreciate you. Appreciate everything.
Thanks for your report. Okay, let's move on to the business items. Consider, um, well, consider an approval of the business licenses for Shears Ten LLC. Tony? Okay. Tony, right?
So my name is Sherston Palmer.
Okay.
And my business name would be Shears Ten.
Oh.
Okay. And just a home salon.
No, dog grooming, right?
Dog grooming, yes. So I plan to operate out of my backyard. We converted the shed into a dog salon.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna start with, I, I get on this soapbox all the time, but, um, we want to make sure that the residents, that, you know, the, the residential neighborhoods stay residential. So with that, you understand that there's no signage?
Absolutely.
And what about parking and did it, we don't want your neighbors to be affected by a business. So, so tell us how you're going to.
So I only groom one dog at a time. They're welcome to come over and drop their dog off, but they're not going to be staying. I can go pick up their dog if they'd like, but it would be just one dog at a time. So there's not increased the traffic at all. And I have several parking spots.
Nothing that would affect, you, you doing this wouldn't, isn't going to affect your neighbors with?
No, no, I have six parking spots in my backyard. I have an RV pad. So if they wanted to stay, they could and they would just park their car in the backyard.
Counsel?
I make a motion that we approve, uh, the business license of Shears Ten LLC.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, Tony Wilson, who, who, Tony Wilson, is that? Okay. Tell us what you're doing, Tony.
I have almost the same story, almost exact same story. Um, we have a shed and we put it in the back to do dog grooming, pretty much one dog at a time.
Your neighbors? I was just, no.
About it. Um, we have about, of our parking, what, a quarter of an acre apart. So, um, which I don't think will be a big deal because it's just one dog at a time. And people will drive. It's kind of like, um, we have horses. So it's like back by our horses. So they drive back, drop their dog off and pick it up when, when they're done.
Again, you heard, you heard my speech.
I don't have any signs.
Okay, I get, no signs. And then we don't want to change what our residential neighborhoods look like. And so.
For sure.
Is there any issues with that, with your business?
No, in fact, if you didn't know it was back there, you wouldn't know it was there. Yeah.
I'm just really glad I don't have to go all the way out to Plain City to get my dog groomed.
I'm a man for this, so.
That's great.
I'll make a motion to approve the business license for Tony Wilson.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Welcome both of you. So, um, you're gonna work out the licenses with? Okay. All right. Thank you. You're welcome to stay. Okay, consideration and action, uh, for the request to rezone the John Watson property located at approximately eleven hundred north, two thousand west, parcel number fifteen dash zero zero four dash zero one one eight from R one fifteen to a C two commercial zone. Mr. Watson, are you here?
I am.
Okay.
John Watson, sixteen twenty-three, Far West Drive.
Um, we, we do have address code here.
No, I just came from another meeting.
I just, I just wanted.
Trying to get home in time to go change, but, uh, I, it wasn't to overwhelm you by any means, wearing a tie. First of all, I'd like to tell the planning commission, thank you for a couple of weeks ago. I was out of town the night of this and they moved this forward. I had called Geneva on it and, uh, they were well aware of what I was trying to do. And so I appreciated that. What really, uh, as I told them eighteen months ago, I went, started down this road and, uh, to, to try to conform with, uh, what the city wants done out there. And, uh, I, I got in a process of splitting a, a one lot subdivision and had to all go to, uh, residential first. And I got a little tired and had some work to do there. And so I'm now back eighteen months later after that has taken place and I'm now trying to get it from the residential into a commercial zone.
As, as we, we understand it, this was part of the plan, the whole plan.
It was.
Take it back and then put it back into.
It was. I, I would like a question, uh, answered, if you will, because I've read the ordinances and maybe planning could help me or maybe you could help me. Um, as I understand, the difference between C three and C two is a bigger parcel of land. Is that correct? Five acres plus?
Yeah, there's some other changes.
C three is only allowed on the twenty-seven hundred north corridor. So that's, 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 that's the difference. Thank you.
And in the general plan, this particular parcel is zoned as future of C two.
And I knew that and I, I just wanted that clarification, what the purposes were on that. So thank you.
Counsel, have any questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion unless you have anything else.
I don't.
I make a motion that we rezone the John Watson property, um, at eleven hundred north, two thousand west from R one fifteen zone to the C two commercial zone.
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Like, like, I guess we do on, on a rezone, don't we? So roll call. Dave. Josh.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Janelle.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for setting the dress standard for us.
I'm gonna come back and leave my.
Like a tuxedo.
It's just too much.
Thank you. Okay, um, consideration and action on the Matt Montano site plan located at thirty-seven seventy and thirty-seven sixty-two North Higley Road. Yeah? Is Matt here? Oh, there, okay.
Matt was not able to be here, so I'm here representing him. I'm Mike Jensen with Hanson Associates.
Okay.
So, any questions on the plans? We should know what's going on with it.
We did see that email today on that.
I think when the planning commission, a lot of the concerns, if I'm not wrong, were around the landscaping, right? And just the site. And so most of that, I believe, is all resolved. You guys, have you looked at the latest plan?
Yeah.
My one, go ahead, Janelle.
No, I did, yeah, I saw today. Yeah, what, what's the thing? What, uh? Yeah, there you go. What did it say?
Okay.
I did have a question. I know in the conditional use, we had indicated that it had to be twenty-five percent office, seventy-five percent, um, warehouse. And I don't know if it's at this point, this may be a question for the planning commission, is that at this point in the site approval that we review those, those, uh, parameters within the conditional use to make sure that they're, because they're in the, on the plans, there was no, it, no drawing.
That doesn't affect the site plan at all. That would just be the use, so.
Usually that comes to when they get a.
Their business license. Yeah.
Okay, then they make sure that it matches that condition.
Yeah, that's passed us.
Okay.
So I, just, I mean, it's not like a super important question. The landscaping, it looks like you guys did a great job putting some landscaping in. My question is, the reason they weren't doing landscaping was because there's no secondary water. So I don't want to set them up for failure. I mean, I'm sure whoever did this has drought tolerant plants, but I guess I just don't want to feel like, I don't want to set anyone up for failure to not be able to water and then have it look worse. You know what I mean? Like.
Land's zero escape, so it's, it bushes and shrubs, I believe, with no lawn or grass or anything.
Right. Are they still doing like gravel anywhere? I guess just in those, on the south end? Or the, these, oh, the stormwater ponds? That will still be, okay. Like I say, I, I'm sure it'll look lovely. I just, I didn't want to like overdo it, like make you feel like you have to do landscape everything. You know what I mean?
Yeah, those are the three inch rock is what they have called out there, those.
So I had a question, uh, and it may be a little bit late, but, uh, I, I read the fire department comments and I know they're not crazy about their hammerhead turnarounds. What, what was the discussion around that? Or was there a discussion around that either from planning commission or anything that your discussions with the fire marshal?
Well, I think the planning commission had encouraged them to have in and out on the north end of the property.
Yeah, was it?
Is that, was, is that correct?
Absolutely.
So this is a challenge. UDOT is not going to give two accesses on this property. That's just not going to happen. As, as far as the fire department, I believe that's that odd piece on the back. I think that's, uh, I think Dave Reed put that in so that they'd have any means to turn fire apparatus around. Uh, looking at this, and obviously I don't have a scale with me, but looking at it, I would think it meets the requirements of the fire code. Uh, and it's, uh.
This one as well.
I think those issues have been addressed.
Was that your discussion when you had talked about moving that entrance to the north was for that case?
I honestly don't remember.
It was a long time ago. I'm really sorry.
What it was about, but it, uh, like I said, it, I mean, we can put it anywhere in there. UDOT's not going to give us two. And so I don't know that it really impacts it that much because you, from a fire standpoint, you've still got to access the back of the property. And that's going to be the more critical, the more difficult access to achieve. I think they've done pretty well what they can with the, uh, challenges of this piece of property. Uh, so if I were the fire marshal, I would approve it. How's that?
You would? Is that what you said?
Straight from the horse's mouth.
I'm on him anymore here.
Thanks, thanks, state fire marshal Ted Black.
Well, and I did read through the fire marshal comments and they didn't seem to see anything in there and that surprised me. That's why I wanted to bring that up because there's actually two separate emergency accesses down the, uh, east and west side of the building. So, um, all right, that, that's, just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, um, is there any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the site plan located at thirty-seven seventy and thirty-seven sixty-two North Higley Road for Matt Montano.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, roll call. Dave.
Aye.
Josh.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Janelle.
Aye.
I vote aye, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, okay, consideration and action on the appointment of the planning commission. Actually, no, consider an action of the reappointment of Ted Black to the planning commission. How does the council feel?
Um, I want to thank Ted for sure. He's a, he's, um, puts in a lot of time, does a lot of work. Um, I would say I do like the idea of getting some new, shall we say, blood into the planning commission. Um, and I attend all the planning commission meetings. Um, I'm sometimes unhappy with the way some residents and business owners are treated in those meetings. I feel like it sometimes comes across as a cross-examination instead of just a cooperative environment. So whether that comes from leadership or not, I'm not sure. Um, but I would just bring up those, those issues as being to all the planning commission meetings. I do see that more than I would like to. Um, like I say, having said that, I think Ted's done a great job and he's very committed. Um, but those are kind of my thoughts.
I have to echo, um, similar to what Janelle said. Um, I believe that we have term limits in this country for a reason. And it's to bring more voices to the table and to bring more, more expertise and more, a variety of perspectives. And I don't think, um, I think our, our city stands to benefit from more, uh, representation at the table. And, um, I'm excited to see, um, how this body flourishes in the future and how, um, what that, um, what, what that could mean to this body. And, um, I appreciate Ted's expertise and his service to his community. He's definitely a dedicated, dedicated member of our community. Um, and I just, I think that there's a lot of possibility here.
Personally, I'd like to thank Ted for his service, um, for a city our size and, and stuff. It's great having a, someone like a state fire marshal and his expertise. And I think that in conversations with Ted, he's done a great job in trying to do his very best to serve. So I really appreciate his service.
I can't be the only one that doesn't say something. But no, I also appreciate Ted and I appreciate the fact that you guys have, with your update, you handled, you know, where we're going from here. So you have a, you have a road forward for us. So thank you for, for everything you've done to serve the community.
And I have to, I have to echo that as well. I, you know, I'm grateful for the knowledge and the, the things which have gone on here. So with that said.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission to appoint Geneva Blanchard as planning.
We're, we're back to Ted Black, reappointing Ted.
Oh, I thought, okay. Well then, I'll make an, I will make a motion to decline to reappoint Ted Black to the planning commission.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, we'll vote on the motion and we'll do it by roll call. Janelle.
Aye.
I kept to think about that, the way it was written. Okay. Katie.
Aye.
Josh.
Nay.
David.
Aye.
Okay, and I, I vote nay as well, but the motion carries with three votes, um, to. Ted, thank you. We appreciate you very much. Okay. All right, consideration and action on the appointment of planning commission chairman and vice chairman as stated in the report of the planning commission. Geneva as chair, Geneva Blanchard as chair, Lyle Earl as vice chair. How does the council feel?
I support this. I, I support this appointment. I think, um, Geneva's background and her prior experience in service on the planning commission will, um, will serve her in this role really well. And I'm excited to see what she's going to accomplish.
I agree. Geneva is knowledgeable. She's professional, approachable, um, easy to get along with. And I think she'll be a good leadership for the planning commission. And Lyle.
Say about Lyle?
Forget Lyle. Lyle, Lyle will make a great vice chair.
I make a motion, if we're ready, that we approve Geneva Blanchard as the planning commission chair and Lyle Earl as vice chairman of the planning commission.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor. Janelle.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Josh.
Aye.
David.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, welcome to the new.
I already got a key.
Chairmanship. Peace of the kingdom. There we go. Okay, um, we would like to, uh, vote or at least set up a work session for six PM on March second to discuss personnel policies and procedures for educational purposes. We wanted to qualify that, so.
Since I'm the one that asked for it, I'll make a motion that we set a work session for March second, twenty twenty-three at six PM to this. Yeah.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Let's vote again, I guess. Janelle.
Aye.
Katie.
Aye.
Josh.
Aye.
David.
Aye.
I vote aye, so that's unanimously. All right, let's move on to the consent items. Approval of the minutes dated February second, two thousand twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? A motion carries. Motion to approve the bills dated February, sorry, fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Katie. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, motion carries unanimously. Um, any assignments and direction for the planning commission? This is something we've had on the past and I think it's something that, you know, if there's, if there's some direction we'd like to go, I think it's a good thing.
So do we need to set up a, like a framework for, um, I would kind of read the procedure for filling the empty, empty seats? Um, do we need to set up kind of like some dates or, I, I know we'd had the application out there.
And I didn't, that's not something that we have on, on the agenda to move on, but I, I, yes. And I thought about that as I went through this, but it was too late. So we need to, we need to come up with, uh.
So we do have two alternates, but we have two vacancies now as well.
So in order to do that, we need to, to have, uh, to decide what we're going to do. Are we going to move the alternates up? Again, it's not on our agenda to do that, but I would say, suggest we put it on. Again, it's not on our agenda to do that, but I would say, suggest we put it on our agenda to.
Okay.
Perfect, okay.
Because now we have two spots instead of one. I think we only asked one of them to come up, so we probably need to ask the other.
Whatever you want to do there, if we're doing that, and then we need to, if, if that's what's going to happen, then we need, also need to go out for more alternates probably, so. So we need to come up with a process, so it sounds like it's in your court until we hear back from you then. Okay.
We've been going back and forth, because I think they have already advertised positions. Just the moving of the reappointment or the alternates proposed is upon recommendation.
True. Right, we, we still have to approve, but it's recommendation, right? But that's where it's going to start. Okay.
As far as dates for voting.
And then we probably ought to, need to have that on our agenda for the next meeting as well, on, on to vote on that and to, if we need to set up times to interview. Thank you. All right, anything else for the planning commission?
Just thank again for their great work. They do a lot of work.
I always like it when Lou raises his hand, because that means he wants some direction from us.
With this recent action that was taken tonight, I think we really need to revisit the landscaping requirement in the commercial zone. That was created when water wasn't an issue. We wanted to have luxurious plantings. We're now on water conservation for the foreseeable future. And as it presently stated, there must be plant material in the landscape plan. So I think we really need to revisit, should there be a landscaping requirement? And if so, how is that interpreted? Because they come to us with basically zero scape, which has been allowed in Far West on several of our businesses. And by zero scape, I mean nothing but just gravel, no plant material at all. We have several businesses in the city where that's the way it is already. And we can't approve it because it doesn't match our municipal code requirement. So I think we need to revisit, how do we want to handle that in the future, so.
I would like to make the recommendations, Janelle, to take back the planning commission, that they work on the ordinance for commercial landscape.
Okay, I think we'd welcome that uh, recommendation.
So. It'll come back. I said, we, we just asked Janelle to, to take that back to you to, to start working on it. It's going through the channels.
Ping pong, ping pong, right channels.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Um, let's talk about follow-up. Let's start with Dave.
Last, last week, I attended a 2023 economic uh, development forum that Geneva was also present at. And it was interesting to hear really what some of the forecasters are looking at. I think maybe the one takeaway that I'd share with everyone is that, the one slide that hit home with me was that, for the first time since they've really been tracking something like this, a greater number of people that forecast what the economy is going to do are forecasting that we're going to see a recession sometime in the next 18 months. So I thought that was kind of interesting, that, you know, what it means for us and the city is it might slow down some of the commercial projects and residential projects that we've seen uh, be so um, aggressive in the past years. Uh, so I fully expect to see that happen. But second thing to report is I actually met with another group of developers out of Salt Lake today, looking at some of Far West vacant uh, commercial properties. So, you know, I, I think it will continue. It just won't do it the same pace that we have in the past, and um, that's it. And then as far as um, February, the uh, the mosquito abatement meeting was canceled for February, so we're looking forward to more.
Too cold out there?
Yeah, really not a lot to discuss. We got through all the budgeting items and everything else. And so to Josh's point, there's not a whole lot to discuss in that meeting right now, so that's my update.
Thank you. Josh?
Um, our sewer board meeting was pushed back because of the holidays, so it'll be in two weeks. And then um, just for the public's knowledge, uh, Lindsay put together a little flyer for this year's T-shirt for the Freedom Festival. We're opening it up to residents to submit um, designs. So we will be posting that in our newsletter and the winners get free T-shirts for their whole family. So anyway, should be good.
Those are good T-shirts.
I like that.
And then um, the only other thing is if you've driven by the public works facility over there, you'll see the buildings all up. They've got the lights on, um, so that's coming along. Talking to Nate, I don't think asphalt will be put down for a while yet just because of the temperatures. But they've got some underground work still to do, but that's, it's moving along. It's good. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Janelle?
Okay, so I wasn't able to attend the Legislative Policy Committee meeting this ma, this week, and so I got on to watch it. And I can find the materials, but I do not see it on YouTube, so either I'm technologically challenged or I can't find it. Anyway, so I went through all the slides, which isn't super helpful if you didn't hear the discussion. But um, I would just say where they're weekly now, you can get on and look like the bill trackers, and they all have positions on what they want to support. Their main goal is to really stand up for the cities. So like I say, I went through the slides. There's talk about gas tax, transportation, I mean, housing, all the same stuff. But I'm hoping to get a little better direction on where their YouTube videos are actually stored, so that next week I can watch it, because like I say, the slides only have so much information. So unfortunately, I don't have a lot to report for that. But um, we did, I'm sure you guys all saw the email, we got compliant with the moderate income housing. So that is now in our general plan that was approved, and we are in compliance with the state. So we're good till next year when we have to increase reporting things. And then um, the parks meeting, I apparently missed because I didn't know we had one.
I thought it got canceled.
Last time?
What, this week?
This week.
Yeah, this week was. I don't think I went last time. Wait. Well, I thought I missed a parks meeting, so apparently I didn't, so I have nothing to report from the parks meeting.
It was nearly a month ago, we forgive you.
Okay, well, I thought because the bearers had come in, that I thought we had an extra meeting.
You did miss the last one.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the one I missed, so I don't have anything to report.
Katie, thanks, Janelle. Thanks, Scotty, thanks for the moderate income housing.
Yeah, I was surprising how quick they approved that.
I think because we'd had a meeting with her, so she kind of knew what was coming. She'd seen the draft. We just made a few tweaks, so, but I was surprised. I didn't send it until like nine o'clock at night.
Great, yep.
Sorry, Katie, go ahead.
Um, okay, Freedom Festival, uh, to add to what Josh said, we're uh, looking for someone to coordinate the parade for this year. So I'm uh, gonna put out some feelers to some of our kind of neighborhood Facebook groups. But if you um, know of someone or, or someone that is, wants to, uh, I mean, I love a parade, so. If you want to plan a parade, reach out to us. I met with Liam uh, before meeting today to review kind of his red lines and suggestions for the library um, land lease RFP. He gave me some really good suggestions and some good um, considerations for that RFP. I will um, implement those to the document. And then um, Lindsay, if we could get that on our next city council agenda to have, uh, to discuss and um, take action on as a council, that would be wonderful. And um, I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Like, like Dave, the fire district uh, meeting was canceled this month. It was on Valentine's Day. It's probably wise of all those men to cancel that meeting, so. We, we didn't have our, our meeting. There wasn't much on the agenda, however, for that, so. The other thing I just wanted to talk about was I had the opportunity to attend staff meeting in the mayor's stead and on Monday morning. And um, as, as I listened to our group of employees, I was, I was very impressed with the handle they have on the city. The, the responses, um, everything that went is going on, their concerns. They're doing a great job. I, I hope everyone feels the same. All I've heard is positive comments on snow removal. Like, I have not heard negative comments on snow removal this year. I don't think they have either, and I don't think we've had too many complaints at the office, have we, Lindsay? Okay. But, but for, but for the most part, people are coming out of their way to say something to me, and hopefully you too, about the good, the good works that are going on. So just wanted to report back that the, the city is well taken care of. And so, so thank you for that. That's all I have, so with that said.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Hey, motion, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. It's a little shorter than I expected, but. One more.